Oh, I'm looking at this line. Good evening. At this time, I'll call a regular meeting to the Wallingford Inland and Wetlands Water Course Commission to Order. The date is May 4th, the time is 7:00 PM. Will you join me in pledging allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Roll call. Ally?
Ally McKean.
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
Jeffrey Nekio.
Michael Caruso.
Jim Heilmann.
Erin O'Hair, Environmental Planner.
And I'd like to take a moment and thank Jim for coming back on the commission. He was a major valuable asset when we first started. Okay, consideration of the minutes of the special meeting April 13th. Is there any comments, corrections, modifications to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting April 13th.
Is there a second?
I second.
Call for a vote. Let me see what, um, two, two, six. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Upstain.
Yes. Okay, going on to Old Business, 41 North Plains Highway, Stephen Barrett.
Name and address? My name is Steve Barrett, 41 North Plains Highway.
Okay, as I recall, we left last time, you were double checking on some erosion control methods for your stream, and you got the privilege of Southwest Conservation District to give you some guidance?
Yeah, they gave me to put core logs in to end some plant to hold it in place.
Okay, and is that the route you're taking?
Yes.
Is that what you're gonna do?
Yes.
All right. Erin, you got any other comments regarding this?
Well, tonight I handed out, let me just say, tonight I handed out an environmental planner's report. I just typed it just now. Kind of everything on all the applications came together very late this month. We just, the Southwest Conservation District did go out there, but they went out there April 21st with the owner and walked around, then prepared the report. I got the report on Friday, emailed to me on Friday, and I put it in the packet. That's Southwest Conservation District, a lot, has like 10 pages. The owner didn't get the report because I guess they forgot to email it to him, so I emailed it to you on Monday, I think?
No, you actually got it to me Friday, yeah.
Oh, I did, okay.
Yeah, she had it forwarded right over to me.
So I emailed it Friday, okay. So, um, so that's, they did a good job. Actually, attached, I want to highlight, attached to my environmental planner's report are two pages that explain what core logs are. A lot of people don't know what core logs are. They recommended the use of core logs, C-O-I-R, logs, to protect, to restore the stream bank. And these are essentially shredded material stuffed inside a long sock, kind of like a filter sock, but even more sturdy than a regular filter sock. So the size of the sock, the length of the sock can be modified to what you need. You can put one just at the base of the bank, you can stack them up, they've got to be staked in. And the Southwest Conservation District recommended using that. They like to go more natural, and then ideally you plant plugs of plants that can tolerate water. You plant the plants in there, and eventually the plants grow in, and eventually you got a nice bank. They also recommended a different restoration of the stream bank in about four or five places. I think the owner really would want to concentrate just on one. I mean, it's a lot of work, it's some money to do this, although he is in the construction business, so I guess he's handy enough to do it himself, but it's a lot of work, so. As far as the permit, the applicant did take the commission's advice last time, and I, by the way, I spelled it out in a follow-up letter to him, which is also attached to my environmental planner's report. On April 18th, I sent a letter to the owner applicant saying this, I'm reviewing everything the commission suggested, all the suggestions. One of the suggestions he did follow up on was united concrete, use of the big concrete blocks. And in doing so, it saved him, it helped him, because, because they're so wide, he doesn't have to use as much of a fill area. So he can go with his original 54 cubic yards of fill, he doesn't need to increase the fill area because they're so wide. And the other thing was because they're so, oh, because they're so sturdy, he doesn't have to go up four feet for his retaining wall, he only has to go up two feet, or two blocks high, which I don't know how many feet that is.
So what, what are you going to do? You're gonna use the logs, the?
The core logs would be to stabilize the bank of the river.
You're not using the concrete blocks, then?
The concrete blocks would be for the retaining wall, so it'd kind of be like backup to make sure that, you know, I'm doing everything I can for it.
Okay.
Right, so then, it's too stacked too high, right?
Right, so it would be actually 48 blocks, they're four by two by two. Gavin did help me out with that, $108 a block, so I would bury a pretty good amount of the first one into the ground to kind of prevent any freeze point and shifting of the blocks.
And then there's two, one and then two on top, like one, two?
Right, the first one would be partially underground, majority of it would be underground, and the second one would be on top of that.
Okay.
Right.
And then the fill goes behind that?
Correct.
And how far down would the fill go?
The fill would come pretty close to the top of it, they're actually top blocks, so they allow you to bring the dirt pretty close to the, right to the top and the edge of it.
Okay.
Blocks will come out, I've used the blocks myself. They'll come to finished grade, whatever finished grade you want.
Exactly.
I'm not sure you've got to bury them too far in the ground either. Some, you're in a sandy area there, what do you think, Nick? They should sit pretty well right on the ground, it's there. It wouldn't get too carried by anyway, but, so the blocks are in, the blocks are going in, the logs are going in front of, or in back of?
It would be in front of, on top of the bank of the river.
On top of the, of the blocks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, wait a second. The core logs are going at the base of the bank in the water, first one, the lower one, right?
They told me it would be towards the top of the bank, is what they, what I talked to Melissa and Chris.
The core logs, the way I read it, is for the erosion coming off of the property, not in the river.
No, no, well, that's different. We're talking about erosion.
You know, I don't know if this thing is ready to be approved tonight. You're not sure what's going on.
Well, I really did want the owner to submit a revised drawing, but it's not that complicated a project. I think if we discuss it, we can approve it with these specifications.
But, but I, what are the core logs supposed to do here?
Pretty big.
The bank is being held back.
They're very similar to the silt fence.
That's right, they're on the top of the blocks.
Correct.
They're not down in the brook.
Well, excuse me, at 4:30, I talked to Chris Sullivan, who's the executive director. Now, he didn't write this report. Melissa, another gal at the place, wrote the report, but, but he explained to me the core logs goes in the bottom.
Well, your diagrams show them to the top.
Correct, yeah.
What you sent out is shows them to the top.
But isn't it, doesn't it show more than one going up?
On the, yeah, two rows to the top.
On the, on the top of the bank, right?
And then, and then on the back, you've got the slope of the ground going to the brook with three levels.
If I could, am I correct in assuming you put the concrete blocks on the bottom and you build above them? I suspect, Erin, the reason for doing that would be to prevent undermining. I could imagine these core logs, the density of them is almost neutral to the water, maybe a little bit more, but that would easily allow for undermining, whereas if you set the concrete blocks down below that surface and build on top of that, I think that might be the reason, the rationale behind that. I don't think it's for decorative, is it? Or am I got this completely wrong?
There's two separate.
I believe, I believe it's for erosion control.
There's two separate things going on.
Yeah, undermining, exactly. It's for undermining.
Let me, let me explain, there's two separate things going on. The applicant came in wanting a retaining wall, fill, and his pool. That's all he wanted. But then I went out there and said, whoa, look at this, this is severe erosion on this stream bank. So then we called in Southwest Conservation to help with the restoration of the stream bank. They're really two independent but related activities, all right? What, Mr. Chairman, you're talking about is temporary erosion control. Of course we need temporary erosion control, of course we do. But it goes away. The core logs with the plants in is permanent, it's forever.
But they're not gonna go in front of the block, they may go on each side of the block in the brook, but they're, they're not gonna go in front of the block.
Correct, they go in, down by the water, correct.
What, what'd you say?
They go down by the water.
But not in front of the block?
Well, not immediately, I think he wants to put his blocks 10 feet back from the edge of the bank. 10 feet back is where.
What's 10 feet back?
Where he wants to start his retaining wall blocks that used to be.
10 feet back from the water, he's not gonna be on the water's edge?
Yeah, that's what I understood from last time.
It was, yeah, it was 10 feet back, but the, the point of the core log was to make sure that nothing undermines from the block or off of that into the river, so the core logs.
Your blocks are going 10 feet from where? From the edge of the water?
Right.
Is that eroded out now?
No, this is to prevent the flood, if it rises up, from washing out underneath my pool, that's the only reason.
This, so, okay, so the blocks are not to hold the river in its trace, in its course, water course?
Correct, it's to retain the dirt behind it and, and have the pool elevated. The core log would be to continue, to keep the, the river from eroding.
So you're gonna have the row of blocks, and then you're gonna have earth in front of the blocks, and these core logs are going to be on that earth in bank?
Correct.
You agree? You agree?
Yes.
Okay, all right, everybody got the picture now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so everything's fine? What else?
Oh, well, in my, if you look at the environmental planner's report, I have recommendations on page two of my environmental planner's report, stabilization work. The first condition of approval would be stabilization work, which we described. One, the conservation commission would like four or five different areas stabilized, but I think that's rather ambitious. At this point, I think if the owner just did the one below his pool area, that at least he's doing that, and it's gonna keep his, his yard from eroding and going down to Long Island Sound every time it floods, so, so at least that one, okay? Number two, yard improvement work to be, which is the retaining wall, the fill, and the pool, to be constructed with a dry forecast, of course, that makes sense, and then erosion control installation to be put below the retaining wall. You call me up, Mr. Barrett, you would call me up and say, Erin, I put it in, come look, and I come look, and if I say it looks good, then you continue with the rest of your project, meaning with the concrete blocks and the fill and so on. And then a copy of the Army Corps permit submitted to me as soon as he gets it, I know it'll take a while. The Southwest Conservation District recommended you do it, but they're not concerned about when you do it, just as long as you, you do it at some point, you don't have to do it before you start the work. And that's a recommendation as to how you do it. I've never done one of these, but it's explained in here how you, how you do it. Did you see that in, in the report?
I did.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, any comments? Ally?
No.
Nick?
No.
Jeff?
No.
Mike?
No.
Jimmy?
No.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion regarding significant activity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application, we have to catch up on the.
223.1.
22, A 223.1, 41 North Plains, North Plains Highway, Stephen Barrett, be deemed not significant activity.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second, call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes. All right, now I entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application A 22 dash 3.1, 41 North Plains Highway with conditions of approval.
Before I ask for a second, the problem is, we have nothing, we're approving, we're asking to approve the project, but we don't have any kind of a sketch of the project. So I think the, the motion should include an approved sketch given to Erin to follow on this description.
Okay, I amend my motion. I, Mr. Chairman, I present a motion to, I make a motion to accept application A 22 3.1, 41 North Plains Highway with the requirement of a drawing be submitted to Erin O'Hair, environmental planner.
For her approval?
For her approval.
Second?
Second.
Does the other conditions people don't want, the four I suggested? In the, in the environmental planner's report, the four conditions or no? Or any one of them?
They look kind of like instructions rather than what they've already talked about.
Won't that, won't that really come into the, the, I mean, I don't mind including it, but won't that come into your, your sketch?
Well, the dry forecast.
What?
For, to be constructed in a dry forecast, for him to call me after he's got his erosion control down, so I can come and look, make sure it's installed right, and then the Army Corps thing later on, the Army Corps permit copy later on, and, well, the stabilization work he's agreed to do. So maybe not that one, but the other ones, and the sketch to be handed in.
All right, so you would draw your second?
Withdraw.
Will you draw your first?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Try it again?
Okay, we'll try it again, including the conditions of approval and the sketch. Motion, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application A 22 3.1, 41 North Plains Highway, Stephen Barrett, with the conditions of the, four conditions detailed in the environmental planner's report, plus a sketch of the work to be submitted to her and approved by her.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Okay, Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be voting, if you have five.
I'm not, I, I'm lost track of, are you a alternate or a member? You're an alternate, but Mike?
Oh, no.
You're a member, so you're in, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay. All right, motion made and, and approved, correct? All right, you're on your way.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Application A 22 3.2, 155 E Street, Ferdy Management Corp. There's one up there too, but that's all right.
I didn't even see it.
I'm not sure the cameras can see that, so you gotta move it over to at least that area.
Yes.
Good evening. For the record, Tom Linden, Linden Landscape Architects from Weathersfield, representing Ferdy Management Corp. on this project. Quick review, it's a 8,400 square foot addition to the building in the northwest corner, which is top left on that sheet, with some minor revisions to the driveway, a new detention basin on that side. The building is within the FEMA flood line, the FEMA flood zone, so we have a compensatory volume issue that we need to deal with because we're filling on that side. On the west side of the site is where we propose to excavate to create the volume that we need to balance those two things out. Do you want me to go to the plan and point to it?
I think that's probably best, and there's a microphone to be used. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Hey, there we go. So again, the northeast corner, the addition goes along this backside of the building. Existing driveway gets repaved and relocated a little bit and narrowed down. There will be a detention basin on this side, I'll show you that a little closer on the next page. So the dark blue line is the FEMA, FEMA flood line and FEMA AE zones on the property. The light blue line is the 50-foot offset from that line, the regulatory area that you guys have control over. So because we're filling in this area for the building, we have a volume of FEMA flood zone that I talked about last time that we need to compensate for. We're compensating for, for that on the west side of the site, within the AE zone by lowering the grade here three feet and creating the basin on this side, which is detailed on this one. So this little area is this, so we're creating this basin on this side. Last time when we were here, we were asked to find the groundwater. So we dug two test pits here, and you have pictures in the report of that in your package. We dug two test pits, five and six feet deep, which I highlighted here in the pink, and then you have the pictures over several days. The first day when they dug them right off the bat, they were dry. The following day, there was some water in the first test pit, which is the one closest to where the riprap outfall is. There was water, some water in the bottom of that, about six inches of water. The other test pit was dry. The day I went down there is the one that has the green stick in the hole that shows you inches in depth to show you where the water is and the details of it. The test pit with the water in the bottom, so, so what we have consistent in both is various layers of fill that happened on this site over the years. So at the bottom of both of them is a layer of silty clay gray material that doesn't drain well. Right above that, there's a layer of sand that's anywhere from 18 to, roughly 18 inches. Of course, sand fill. Above that, in one of the holes, and I'm just, I'm not looking at it exactly, but it's in that report, there's another layer of clay fill, and then on top of that, there's what is kind of topsoil-ish material. So the water in, the second test hole never had water in it. The water in the first test hole is leaching out of that sand layer that's about 36 inches down. So any of the surface water that's making its way down through the soil gets trapped in that sand layer, and then there's silty clay underneath it, and there's nowhere for it to go. So when you dig out the hole, the water leaks out of the sand, and that's why there's water in the hole. It's not groundwater coming up. So this area is proposed to be lowered three feet. So we're coming down three feet, taking that material out, taking it offsite, that material disappears, and that creates a cubic foot volume that compensates for the cubic foot volume that we're filling over here. Those numbers are updated in the chart that's at the end of that. So we didn't find groundwater, we found terrible soil, but that basin is simply being created for compensatory flood storage volume. It's not intended to be detention or infiltration, and I'll get to that in a second, but it's not intended, intended that the water infiltrates into the soil, it's purely flood storage, just like the floodplain works. So when we were here last time, the chart had shown that we were creating 6,000 cubic feet of, of volume, that 2,000 of it was for detention, 4,000 of it was the, the compensatory volume that we needed. We're no longer doing that. The detention basin on the east, and I'll show you that, I'll show you now, the detention basin on the east, we looked at. So this detention basin we're creating on this side, the last, the original set of plans was not big enough in volume to handle the detention that we needed. We've since revised it and made it bigger, and it handles the amount of detention that we need. So this handles all the detention that we need, that's one issue that we needed to solve. The fill in the AE zone is roughly 4,000 cubic feet of, of volume, we're creating 6,000 over here, and we're just gonna leave that basin that big. We could, we could make it half a foot less probably, but we're just gonna leave it the way it is. Much easier to tell somebody, dig down three feet. So we've handled the detention issue by making this bigger, we've separated out the combined detention compensatory volume crazy calculation that I did last time, that's just compensatory flood storage on that side, no groundwater. So we've done what we need to do for that. Those are the two big things that changed since last time. You have the chart with the revised numbers, the stuff circled in red is the numbers that changed from the original time, so you can see what it is. The detention numbers, I can get it and look at it, the detention numbers changed a little bit, but we have slightly more than we need, and we definitely have more than we need for compensatory flood storage. So these are the things that changed that you have in your packet. I also included in the packet, the, the structural engineers did some soil borings on this side structurally to figure out whether the building can be built on the soil that's there. So they did borings there, I included those here, just for your information. They found groundwater at five and six feet in the four locations that they have. This basin is only four feet deep, so we're above where groundwater was found on that side. So we think we've solved all the problems and that this now works, according to the regulations and according to what we're submitting to be done here. So are there any questions on this part of it?
The date of the boring, the, was that in April? Not the borings, the, the test pits.
The test pits. In April.
Yeah, I, I think that's an important point to make out here because these kind of pits are necessary for displacement evaluations that you're doing there, and the last thing you'd want to do is do a test spit in a drought or in a dry season.
Yeah, in August.
Yeah, exactly, and so I think it justifies the intent of the purpose here, and I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Yeah, one of the things, and it's written in that report, the day I went out on the 19th and staked the locations. out on the 19th and staked the locations, and it's in part of Aaron's report, that there was water on the ground. It's a very uneven surface in the area that we're talking about. It's not a maintained, it's not a beautiful lawn kind of thing. It's just overgrown, naturalized area, and it's very uneven, and there's pockets of water on the surface after it rains that stay there for a while because the soil underneath it is bad. It takes a while for it to get down. So, that was on a Tuesday. The test pits were dug the following Wednesday. All the water on the surface was gone. It either evaporated or soaked in, and obviously, some of it soaked in because it's coming out of that sand layer, and it's been, it's been dry ever since. Now, we're in a dry spell for the past couple of weeks.
All right, let me get back to this. All right, commissioners, any comments?
No.
Ally, Jim, Nick?
Is that print certified with a stamp, engineered stamp certification on that? Usually, we take a presentation, and we have a copy of a print in front of us that is certified by an engineer.
Yes. Everything so far has been stamped.
Are we going to get a copy of that?
Yes.
Because we don't have a copy.
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
Mike?
No.
Aaron, comments?
Well, first off, when did Tom plan to submit the site plan, the revised site plan?
When everything has been worked out, and you're fine with everything that we're changing, we'll give you this set of plans. If you want this final revised set of plans tomorrow, I'll print them and give them to you tomorrow.
Because, well, there's several reasons I'm asking. One is, I think we're out of, yeah, yeah, we're out of time tonight, so the commission will, as I recommended here in my report that I handed out tonight, the commission will have to request an extension of the applicant, which we do often, and nothing out of the ordinary, and to continue this onward. And then you, the applicant, grants the extension, and that would take us to the June meeting. I just want to point that out because we don't have the site plan yet. And yesterday, I met with the town engineer, and she stressed what Commissioner Curran mentioned, that she's reluctant to review what was handed in because it's not by a certified engineer. In other words, she was looking at the drawing of the compensatory flood storage area, and she had trouble understanding. She had a lot of questions about it, but she said, "Why isn't it certified by an engineer?" I mean, she likes to look at the final thing that's certified. We can talk about that, her issues with the compensatory flood storage if you want, or maybe you should contact her directly about, she didn't really understand how it was going to work because it was taking flows off the parking lot like today. The flows just go off the parking lot. There's no curb, so they just go off, and they're going to fill up that basin, right? And it doesn't infiltrate. The soils are, well, one of them, actually, I went out there today. I saw the two. They look great, as you reported to the commission. The groundwater is not high. I mean, it looked good. So, but last, when you and I met a week ago, you said they don't infiltrate well. So, when this water comes off the parking lot, is it going to infiltrate or is it going to sit there?
And the drainage report calculations will tell you the answer to that question. And the answer to that question is that the compensatory area and the detention basin on the east are not, the calculations didn't include infiltration into the soil. It's almost 100% storage.
Okay, so it's going to store water when it's raining. It's going to store the water that comes off the parking lot, and you'll have to demonstrate that that's, like, fill it up halfway, and then the flood is going to fill it up the other half away or whatever. And the town engineer's point was, okay, let's say it fills up, then a week later, we have another flood. There's, it doesn't drain out. She didn't, couldn't figure out how it drained out, how it leaves.
And we just received your memo tonight that says you had a conversation with her. We haven't gotten a formal review from the town engineer yet, so we don't have anything to respond to yet.
Well, she hasn't got a formal set of, she hasn't got a formal set of plans either. But I can see where Aaron's going. All of a sudden, before the flood storage is needed, the retention pond is going to be full of water because that's your flow of water from the parking area going into that retention pond? Is the flow coming across? I see you've got it right straight across there.
The water that flows, the water basically flows from this pavement. That's the low point. This stuff flows this way. This stuff flows in a couple of directions.
Was it, is it going to flow in?
So, yes, it will be flowing across there. There is no curb. It will flow into the way it does now and makes the puddles and stuff on the ground. It will flow into that. So, if the question is, "How do we solve that problem?", it would be grading that this is not a hole, that this grade disappears so that it flows out into the riprap that's here that's seven feet deep.
Well, something like that because you'll have a basin full of water with no capacity to store any.
If we had that review comment earlier, we would have addressed that.
If you were an engineer instead of an architect, you probably would have had the answer for this. Well, I mean, there's a lot of things going on. You've also, I mean, we've got a DEP notice of violation involved. I'm not excited about giving you an additional building to put more contaminants in this area. How are you addressing their concerns? Not from there. You've got to come up. Name an address, of course.
Jeff DeValle. I'm the plant manager for Ferdy Technologies.
Could you, could you just spell your last name? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's D as in David, U V as in Victor, A L. First name Jeff.
Thank you.
Yes, so I actually took part in the DEP inspection, went around with both the ladies. The first thing that they brought to the attention was the product we had outside, palletized finished product that's bagged, wrapped, plastic wrapped. The only thing she said that needed to be done additional is, I guess, you have to have some kind of roofing over anything that's stored outside. So, she said, "According to them, it's perfectly fine to be out there. You just have to have some kind of roof over it." So, it doesn't have to be enclosed, but does have to be like a made structure. So, what we've done in the past is we've actually had large pieces of the plastic go over the pallets that are already plastic and stored, but she said those have to be, it's got to be something permanent, so.
Well, how do you think you increased your volume four times the accepted rate of NP&amp;K? You think it just happened, or was there a spill unloading trucks, or was it dust in the air? I mean?
No, there's been no, we went through the spill. We've had no spills at all. The, I don't know if she attached the pictures to the report that she put out. When it says spills in that report that she put out, we're talking about, you know, a area maybe that big, you know, where there might have been fertilizer on the ground, which we went around that day and swept everything up. So, there were no truck spills, anything like that. As for the test results, nothing has changed operationally at all. You know, I talked to her a little bit about it and how much of the concentration would affect those numbers when it comes to that. I mean, I don't know what it would be, but I know for the amount of stuff that we looked at that day on the ground, people are putting triple that on their lawns when they fertilize their lawns. So, I can't imagine that, you know, small spots like that is going to affect the numbers quadruple. As for anything outdoor, storage, raw materials, there are none. So, all raw materials are stored in the building. The only product we have outside is finished goods, and that's all bagged. Actually, her thought was if we took the stuff that was outside and moved it or brought it back in, that would probably fix our numbers. That product that's out there is sealed. Like, it's bagged. It's plastic. Like, that's, there's no fertilizer leaking out of the bags, you know, that was not witnessed or anything like that. So, I honestly don't think that would change our numbers at all, really.
Well, you're five out of nine that they didn't agree with your practices on their report, but you've got issues going on. You've got issues here. You've got issues, and you want us to increase your building. You've got issues with the town engineer. You've got to get a more certified map to them to make, to figure out what's going on. What else, Aaron?
Well, what I, unfortunately, so much has come in in the last few days. I did not get you your report, my environmental planners' report, till tonight. I handed it out. But I guess what I would like to see is compliance with their Ferdy's 2018 permit approval. Like, I don't know why they're dragging their feet. I brought it to their attention in March, you know, to get on it. Let's get on it. Let's put the placards. What's missing out is the placards. Let's get them up. Let's get that western basin corrected. There was that, you know, eroded area in the western basin, and let's get that corrected. And last week, when I was sitting down with Tom Linden, I said, I was scratching my head, "Why doesn't this work? Let's figure it out." Well, there's several reasons that I put in the report why I think it doesn't work. In 2019, there was a storage hazardous waste material storage area built, and that was built with administrative approval. I don't know how those flows, if those flows were not considered. Maybe there's some flows coming up. It's concrete, so maybe flows are coming off that. But also, we looked at the landscaping plan, and, oh my word, it was never built right. This western basin might have been graded. It was supposed to be graded maybe 35 feet, 50 feet to the north, graded down gently from the basin, which is deep, then getting less steep and graded out slowly toward the, to the north. Whether or not it never was, I'm not real sure, but whatever happened, it was never planted correctly, and then the landscaper just kept on mowing it. So, at this point, it's a brilliant green lawn, which it's not supposed to be. Someone would have to check the elevations. I don't know if they need to be brought down as per the plan. I've got the 2018 plan here, but it's definitely got to be regraded, at least superficially, and the planting's put in. This is a wetland seed mix I'm talking about that has grown up very nicely in the rest of the basin. So, that was never built right, and Tom and I were looking at the plans, and that's how we stumbled on it. We were looking at the 2018 plans. So, that's got to be corrected. Right now, there's, nothing's been done, but that, I'd like to see that corrected, at least to bring us back to 2018, the way it was supposed to be built. And there's a few other things from 2018. Oh, yeah, the, we talked about it last time, the basin outlet needs to be maintained. There's all sorts of growth in front of it. It's very simple. It would take 20 minutes for someone to maintain that. So, I want to see that done. Okay, then, as was mentioned tonight, the concerns of the town engineer. Well, now I'm moving forward to 2000, to the present day. All the concerns of the town engineer, and they'll be handing in a site plan, revised site plan. We don't have that yet. We don't have a stormwater management maintenance plan, which they know they have to submit, and they will. I haven't seen that yet.
Well, it sounds to me like you've got a lot of things to deal with, Aaron, and the town agencies on. So, we're going to request that you grant us an extension to this application.
Or do you want to have them withdraw?
Or withdraw until you get it all together because you're going to run out of time sooner or later.
Well, they have 65 days in the extension, so 30 days will bring us to June 1st.
It's almost rebuilding a whole application here. If they want to. I suppose it's up to them if they get focused on it.
Well, they could try to make it. I don't know.
Aaron, you're talking about two different segments here. They haven't complied to 2019's, 18, I'm sorry, 2018's application, and you haven't reviewed it, and it's been done right. Now, they're coming back before us to add more building on it and more disturbance. And I don't have an engineered print in front of me. I'm not used to telling him what to do. We need a certified engineer to take the responsibility that it's being done right. None of us are engineers. We're not certified with the state. So, you tell him what's better to read, to withdraw and come back in a couple of months, or if he wants to take the timeframe and he can do it, that's up to him.
Okay, well, I didn't consider the withdrawal aspect, but if you wanted to do that, let's just play this out. You would just, you would then apply again, and you would be received at the June 1st meeting, and then you would present at the July meeting, which is July 27, I believe. It's late. It's delayed in July. Then, we don't have an August meeting. So, the first, so you would either get approved at the July 27th meeting, or you would have to wait for the first Wednesday in September. So, but you do have a lot of issues. The biggest issue, which we haven't even broached, well, I don't know if it's the biggest, but one of the biggest is, and I want to make sure they're on this, the biggest issue is this outside storage. The Wetland Commission approved this with guarantee of no outside storage, and the Planning and Zoning Commission approved it with no outside storage. So, there isn't supposed, and today I was there, and there's a lot of outside, I have pictures. There's a lot of outside storage. So, that has to be resolved. I mean, if this commission and the planning zoning want to allow a roof, which they describe, a roof over the pallets, I think, right? Is that what?
It's DEP, yeah.
Right. I mean, that is, but I don't know if the two commissions would approve outside storage. There's another problem with, I saw, oh, gosh, maybe 3,000 pallets over at, of fertilizer being stored at Allegheny property. I guess, I don't know what the arrangement is. Maybe they're leasing the Allegheny. That's an, for people who don't know, that's an abandoned property. But the fire marshal has told me that that's a brownfield, and under the brownfield regs, I don't know, I haven't verified this, but he says you're not, brownfields can't lease.
Aaron, you know, when that conversation, because the fire inspector has been there and inspected the property with me at the Allegheny site, and he didn't say anything to me about that.
This was the fire marshal. I don't, we have different, we have a fire chief. This was Mike Godelski.
Tall.
Tall, blonde.
Yeah. We did a full walk of it. He did want some separation between some of the stacks, but nothing about not being able to lease that property.
That's Allegheny, we're talking, yeah. Well, and again, we have the issue with, whether it's Allegheny or Ferdy, there's the potential for phosphorus and nitrogen and potassium coming off. I mean, it's the same issue. Either way, it's got to be, they've got some work to do in that arena.
So, what did you decide? Okay, you need to do any paperwork on the extension?
Well, you granted the, you requested the extension. They granted the extension. I will follow up with a letter. Let me just check. Yeah, oh, I just want to mention the DP notice of violation, which was handed to them on the site. I hand, it was one page that we got from the DP, and that, you've got that in your packet, but it's going to be followed up. They have 30 days. The DP has 30 days from April 26 to get a full report. I guess the full report's going to be like 14 pages or something like that. So, that hasn't come in yet, obviously, and we'll be interested in that as well. But the applicant should be ready to address that with us, I mean, to resolve some of these things in addition to our, the commission's issues.
Okay. I think, there's no question, there's a bunch of issues. I think you should get to Aaron sooner than later and get an accurate list of the items. All righty, very good. Thanks. Okay, application A16 4.3 103 North Turnpike, Joseph Ruccello, request for a bond release.
Okay, that came in, and I haven't set a date with him. I have to go out.
Okay, so it's not ready?
No, not ready.
Okay, application A22 4.1 14 Research Parkway, GKN Aerospace, parking lot expansion, stormwater management alter- parking lot expansion, stormwater management alterations.
Okay, we got a letter from them. They would like to table. They were going to present tonight, but they've run into a whole mess of issues, so they decided to ask it for it to be tabled. I, I do want to make-
Does that need a vote?
Pardon me?
Does that need a motion?
No, table doesn't need a motion, but I, I do, I don't know if everyone's got a chance to look at that report. It, 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 again, this, this is the second application where there's no maintenance in twenty-five years, thirty years.
You know, it's unfortunate. I meant to mention to the previous applicant that because the, what showed up from the two thousand nineteen application, it's going to force us to be bonding all applications, which we tried to avoid over the years, but it doesn't seem to work. The same thing goes with bonding the envi, the retention ponds. They're bonding the, and I'll see, that makes it difficult, because that could go on forever. But as Erin's pictures show, the retention pond is in terrible shape. Terrible, terrible. But, anyway. But they're, they've got a whole issue with increasing the size and new sand filters and all that stuff on research. Okay, so that's tabled. Application A twenty-two, four point two, twenty-five, Kendraki Lane, Carrie and Jonathan Burr.
They sent in a, a letter requesting tabling because, just because they've got three different quotes, so they're trying to figure out how they're going to do it from three different contractors.
Tabled. Okay, application A twenty-two, four point three, twelve, Mansion Road, Laura Cerillo. This is an after-the-fact fence installation.
Laura Cerillo, twelve Mansion Road.
Okay. Erin, this is, you mentioned to us last week, your last month, last meeting on this application, correct?
Yes, and it's, I want to point out, it appears two places on the agenda tonight. The other place is under violations, and so that's why I asked the owner to submit an after-the-fact application for some of the issues, but most of the, most of the violation we'll talk about tonight, and that will be coming out. So I don't know if you-
What's going to be coming out? You're going to remove the material?
Yes.
That created the violation?
Yes.
All right. Are you on board with this, then?
Yes, yes.
And, I mean, when it's going to be done, who's going to do it, et cetera?
Well, no, let's go over when it's going to be done. We, I did speak on the phone with Ms. Cerillo, and I do, in the envi, in the environmental planners' report, and-
Well, you're not ready to give an after-the-fact fence permit, or the fence isn't, is not going to be taken out?
All right, let me just back up. I kind of misspoke. I didn't write an environmental planners' report. What it is, is the April fifth letter of violation that I wrote, and it was in the packet. Then the owner submitted an application. That was also in last month's packet. She came in on April fifth and submitted that. So there's two things going on. Is one, the, and I think you've all seen the picture. It's a rather dramatic picture of this miscellaneous material, a lot of concrete and bricks and such, being dumped over the back side slope, kind of steep down to the ravine. None of it's in the ravine. None of it made it into the wetland area, but it's in our fifty-foot upland review area. Okay. That's what has to come out, and the owner doesn't want to replace it with different material. She just wants to dress the edge of it with nice soil, just the edge, and put a fence around so that, as a safety measure, so people aren't going to stumble down into the ravine. That's essentially what's being proposed in her application. So the violation is, the remediation of the violation is to remove that material and stabilize the slope, and it explains how, in my letter, I directed her and her contractor how to stabilize that slope, with erosion control blankets.
Okay, how does that affect this application tonight?
Well, well, that's something that I think the commission should discuss. Do you want to wait until the material is out and then come back, the, the owner comes back on June first, and we proceed with the application and the approval of the various amenities?
Well, are the amenities in place now?
No, no, no.
Then I, I don't, so it's not an after-the-fact fence installation?
There, there is one. I haven't mentioned it. There is one fence down that runs all the way around and down below toward the floodplain down there, and that's for the dogs. But this, the fence I mentioned a few minutes ago is for up, up behind the house.
Can I speak?
Sure.
Sorry?
Yes.
The fence that we put in originally was before we bought the house. We didn't know that we needed a permit for a fence. We put the fence in. Obviously, there was a phone call made about the fill. That's when Erin came out. I explained to her the fill is not supposed to be there. There was a miscommunication between us and the landscaping company. They came out at the end of last year. Their truck got stuck. They were supposed to remove the fill. My husband had a surgery at the end of the year. All plans got stopped. Everything will get removed, but I'm waiting on, you know, when we can actually remove it. And then, when Erin came out, she obviously said that fence you need a permit for, but then she gave me a great idea of putting the fence, another fence, right along the slope line, because eventually I do want to sell the house, personal reasons. But it would make a good-
So there's a fence now that's staying there?
I would, yeah, I would like it to stay there.
Okay, so that's the after-the-fact fence?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
I showed it in this picture that went out.
Yeah, okay.
It's hard to see. It's in the woods. It's hard to see.
Yeah, it goes all the way back.
All right. Okay. So the other half should be in proposed removal of filling, of fill. So is, or is it two separate applications?
Right, right.
I mean, after-the-fact installation, proposed yard edge filling and installation of fence. You're going to, you're not going to fill more. You're going to remove fill?
She, well, she's, wants to leave about an area twice the size of this desk.
Okay.
If it's not okay, it's fine. We'll take it out.
Oh, that's, I'm trying to just get the, the correct nomenclature here. What are we actually approving?
Okay.
Okay. We're approving to leave the fence there, existing fence, and we're also approving future installation of fence and shrubs and some fill.
Right. And then separate from that is the violation remediation.
Well, that's why I, I don't know if that shouldn't be in another separate, separate kind of thing.
Okay.
All right. I, I think, I think we should split this up. Give her, see if the commission wants to give her an after-the-fact fence installation, period. And then also give her a permit or approval to remove the fill and install a new fence and shrubs in the upland review area.
Could you re, could you repeat that?
Okay. And after-the-fact fence installation, period, end.
Okay.
Then another permit for removal of fill and installation of a fence and shrubs.
Okay.
Associated with the violation, to satisfy the violation. Okay, now, does it need another application number? Are you going to have an A and a B to this? I hate to call it an after-the-fact fence installation when we haven't removed the fill yet.
Well, well, we could do it like we usually do, and you skip down to the violation section. We handle that. You could take an action that direct the owner to remediate the fill.
By removing the fill. And so is that a permit number, or just a-
No, no, that's a remediation. We don't give, typically give a number to-
All right, let's take the first half. All right, I'll entertain a motion of after-the-fact fence installation. Be allowed.
Would that be like a not a significant activity?
I don't know if we have to go to that extent, the fact that it's an after-the-fact.
Yeah, yeah, we felt, yeah.
We got to do that?
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deem application A twenty-two, four point three, twelve Mansion Road, Laura Cerillo, not a significant activity.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Now, if we go over to the violation, and it, in a, okay, the violation-
It's number seven.
Yeah, number seven. It's just, it's just violation at this address, where the applicant is, or the violator is directed to remove the fill and install a fence and shrubs in appropriate area. Okay?
May I just add something?
Hang on a minute. Go ahead, Nick.
I'm just worried about the, the second part, the soil and erosion measures are in place because it's, if they're going to take fill out, what's going to keep the fill that's there now from washing down?
Okay.
Right.
So they need some kind of stabilization, either silk fence or hay bales, something.
We can, we can go back with a sketch approved by Erin.
The, in, in the letter, the violation letter that was sent April fifth, or April, I'm sorry, April, yeah, fifth, to the owner, it, it goes into great detail of how to remove that material and how to stabilize the slope. Should I read it?
No, but if, if it's included, we want it included in the motion.
Right.
The motion to follow Erin's guidelines as in her violation letter.
Yeah, yeah. And, but to your point, Nick, yes, it's, they'd have to do it very carefully, and then it talks about a conservation seed mix, talks about erosion control blankets, because it's very steep. So erosion stake them in or hay bales. What were you thinking?
No, I was thinking either S and E fence or hay bales, something that's removable so we can take the rest of it out, because I don't know how long it's going to take them to take, if it's going to be a two or three-day process, and we get a flash rain. I don't want to have that all washed down further than it already is.
Right, and it, the other thing was, it says here, an erosion, a silk fence at the very bottom, so this stuff doesn't tumble down into the wetland. You know, so anything that might be tumbling gets caught. And plus, for any washout, like you're talking about.
All right, Ally, I don't, you want to try it, Ally?
I'll give it a shot. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the notice of violation remain at twelve Mansion Road, Laura Cerillo, unpermitted filling, pending address of the situation according to Erin's recommendations in her letter dated April fifth.
Okay, motion made. Second?
Second.
Made. Is there any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, A twenty-two, four point four, twelve fifty-one Old Colony Road, James Delaney, removal of existing mobile homes.
Good evening. Rich Reynolds, project engineer with LRC Group, one sixty West Street, Cromwell, Connecticut. We're here tonight for the applicant, James Delaney. Property's located at twelve fifty-one Old Colony Road. The property contains some existing mobile trailers. The property is bordered by Old Colony Road on the east and the Quinnipiac River on the west. There's some commercial properties to the north and the south. The property currently served by Town Water and Septic Systems. A portion of the property is located in Zone AE, a hundred-year, a hundred-year flood zone line is shown on the plans. Let me show that to you. So right above the wetlands is the hundred-year flood line, approximately elevation sixty-eight point nine. Just below that is the flag wetlands that were done by Scott Stevens. Soil types on the property consist of pen with loamy sand and some gravelly sandy loam. Hydraulic soil groups are Group A, which is highly permeable. Soil testing was done on the property for some septic systems that we'll talk about in a few minutes. The property is approved for twenty-nine mobile homes. Per the Health Department, if new septic systems are to be installed, their installation needs to conform to the requirements of the current health code. Based on this information, eighteen mobile homes and septic systems are currently proposed. So on the backside of this, you can see the, the yellow are the existing mobile homes. The tan are the proposed mobile homes. You can see that there are access drives that get down into the property. Old Colony Road is elevated quite a bit higher than the trailer homes down at the bottom. The property is serviced by Town Water, and all the existing trailers use septic systems. So this plan here shows eighteen, eighteen mobile trailers, mobile homes. Two trailers will share a proposed septic system, leaching system and septic tank, except for the ones on the top here. Three trailers will share a, a system and a tank. Each trailer will get a new water service from the existing water line in the access drives. All of the existing trailers and sheds and buildings on the property will be removed, except for this trailer right here. It's the only one that's in fairly good condition. Over time, historically, we've looked at photos, and there were approximately twenty-five trailers at one time on this property, and over time, the trailers have deteriorated and were, were removed. On the backside of the property, on the slope, there's a steep slope towards the Quinnipiac River. There's some wood structures that were constructed. We don't know exactly when, but those are going to be removed as part of the project. Like I said, soil testing was conducted on the property for the new septic systems. The Health Department was on-site to witness the soil testing. Plans have been submitted to the Health Department for their review. So upon approval from inland wetlands, final plans will be sent to them for their final approval. Currently, they are, they're satisfied with the design we have. They just want some minor details added to the plans, benchmarks and things like that, so they can be constructed easily. Site servants, we kept to a minimum. We're proposing, let me, just hold on a second. So this page shows our septic system design plans with all the associated design information. Also on this plan shows all the septic tanks, erosion control measures that we're going to put into the existing catch basins that are located in the access drives. We're going to have silk fence along the top- We're gonna have silt fence along the top of the, uh, bank, we have an erosion control plan as part of the, um, submission package that shows, um, silt fence along the top of the slope. Uh, this sheet shows some construction details for the, um, type of, uh, leaching system that will be, um, installed, and then we have some, um, I don't have the plan with me, but we have some, um, construction details that were included in the submission for, um, silt fence, um, silt sacks in the catch basins, um, and other, uh, erosion control measures. Also had seed mixture.
Where's your catch basin's gonna be?
So these are existing catch basins. So within the, eh, on the site, excuse me, currently, there's some existing catch basins that collect runoff from the drives. So there's gonna be no, no new drainage as part of the.
Are they just dry wells?
They are not dry wells, no. So there, there is a drainage system, um, the best that we could trace it out, um, these basins are interconnected and somehow get down to the river. There's an outfall at the river, um, but we couldn't find it, uh, we had our survey crew go out, excuse me, we even did GPR to try to find it, and we couldn't find where the, uh, the pipe, um, exits, um, the property.
Have you got, uh, drainage system for the rest of the parking, or the driveways? Are they all gonna pitch back to the, those catch basins?
So we're not changing the grading of the site, so the way it's, um, graded currently, um, it's been effective and, and the water will continue to flow towards those catch basins.
From the west to the east?
Let me check the grades, I said, so eighty-one, eighty-four. Eighty-one. Yeah, so the grade pretty much drapes back towards the east, yes.
You all set?
Yes, I am.
Commissioners, Ally?
So will there be any fence or other barrier to keep people from throwing debris or litter, et cetera, over the edge into the river?
So there is an existing fence, um, on the top of the slope, and in the report, um, from Erin, she, uh, suggested that a new fence be installed along the top of that slope, so, um, the property owner is going to install a, a fence along the top of that slope.
Okay, I see that on your plan here on, uh, on the first page, it's not really complete, so that'll be complete all the way across?
Right, it's, there's blo- broken pieces and things, so yes, it'll be one continuous fence, and we'll add that to the plans.
All set?
Yes.
Nick?
It's, uh, what's the, um, regulation as far as how many trailers you can put there? I was under the impression that, uh, the town didn't allow any more trailers in town.
That's correct, um, trailer parks are not allowed in town, but since this is an existing trailer park, um, as long as we don't exceed what was, um, historically on the property, that it would be allowed.
Does this have to be approved by DEP or the state?
It does not. And we, we don't exceed the threshold for septic systems that would require us to go to DEP also, um, so s- we're less than seventy-five hundred gallons per day for, um, septic flow, so we wouldn't need to go to the state for a review, it's just a local review.
Jeff?
Nothing.
Mike?
No questions.
Jimmy?
Um, I think they have, uh, remarkable soils for drainage.
Uh, that's true.
It, it is all sand, for sure.
Yeah, that's probably why, eh, it's possible that there's been a collapse of this drain going out, I mean, just dump it into the soils, they're anywhere, it just dissipates. Um, no, no question.
There is an item that, that got pointed out, and I think it's in our regulations, that you're not to have a septic system within a hundred and fifty feet of a water course. I think that might have come from Mr. Heilman from many years ago.
Yeah, that was for watershed, I think, though.
Yeah, I, I think so, but that isn't way the, that was the intent, but I don't think that's what the, uh, regulations say.
Interesting.
You have a comment regarding that?
Um, it's been reviewed by the Health Department, they didn't make any, um, suggestion about that.
Well, it's, it's a wetland regulation, it's not a Health Department regulation.
Well, I'm, um, i- if, if that is, uh, a requirement that we need to, um, then I can, we can just flop these two, we can move this and we can rearrange the systems to make it happen.
Or, or, oh, hang on just a minute, or it's, it's just gotta be addressed at this meeting, why it doesn't pertain to the Quinipiac River? That it was designed for a watershed area. Erin?
I just wanted to say that this is, this, you're talking about section two point one point Z point one about the, uh, septic systems, but that doesn't mean they're prohibited. It means if they're proposed, it necessitates coming before the commission, getting a permit, cause it's a regulated activity. As with all our regulated activities, you can propose it and the commission has to approve it. It doesn't say thou shalt keep out away a hundred and fifty feet, you know, so it's a little different, so, um, and so in my report, I indicated this was one of the regulated activities that the applicant is applying for. I, I trust you read that section about, there, I added that, okay. And, but yes, at some point, obviously not tonight, we really should revise that, um, regulated activity, because I think the intent was, as Commissioner Heilman said, pertaining to public drinking water supply watersheds, not to every watershed in town, and this is not a public drinking water supply watershed. So we just have to tweak that regulation a little bit.
Well, how old is that regulation, Jim? Twenty years?
Hate to admit it.
Maybe a whisper of more?
Yeah, that goes back.
Yep. Okay, um, you got any more comments, Erin?
Yes, I, um, Rich, you said something tonight, my ears perked up, I didn't know you were planning, tell me, is, did I hear it right? You're planning to remove all the wooden structures on the slope, I thought it was just one wooden, one, the ones on the far, n- southwestern corner.
Well, they, they are an eyesore, um, so I, um, I would say we, we would want to do that.
Okay.
We don't wanna disturb the slope, we don't wanna create any, eh, erosion possibilities, but anything that's unsafe, um, th- the property owner would, uh, would take it down for sure.
And, and what we're talking about, or refers to the pictures that were stapled to the back of the Environmental Planner's Report that went out last Friday night, these, you know, mishmash assemblage of miscellaneous materials that people have very creatively assembled over the years on the side of the slope, there's even a surfboard, this white thing is a surfboard, somebody's surfboard sitting there, um, I guess he goes surfing on the river, so I'm glad that you wanna remove that stuff, I just, eh, again, you're, it ha- I don't know how you're gonna do it, it's kind of precarious, but maybe to, like, sawz all it off and leave some, maybe, that you, ripping it out might rip, cause too much erosion.
The intent would just be to, um, you know, walk down the slope and carry it back up the slope and, and not disturb any of the slope.
Yeah, cosmetic.
Pretty much, you know, just to make it, I don't wanna say it look pretty, cause we're not gonna make it look pretty, but just to take up some of the, the eyesore there.
Right, and i- if anything is actually installed, maybe be best.
We're just gonna leave it, yes, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, that would, I would think that'd be a good idea.
Anything else?
Uh, well, in the back of my report on page, uh, oh yeah, I do have a question for you, Rich, you said you were grandfathered in for the twenty-eight, and this was discussed in the planning office, I understand that, but you're only proposing eighteen?
Yes.
And does that mean you're not, you wouldn't come back for more?
So, um, if you look at the, um, the Health Department says that if you're gonna put in new leaching systems and septic systems, they have to meet the current health code. So the current health code requires that a septic tank and system be at least ten feet from the trailers. So I had a conversation with the state, Public Health regarding, is a trailer a building? They say it is, so that we need to keep our septic tanks and our leaching systems at least ten feet away from the trailers. So by doing that, we could only fit in what you see here is in eighteen trailers. We are approved for twenty-nine trailers, but we can only fit in eighteen.
Okay, all right, so then I'll, uh, continue on, uh, for significant ac- you got more?
Well, I was just saying, I do have recommendations for approval on page four.
Page three or page four?
Oh, I'm sorry, they start on page three and they spill over onto page four.
Well, that's good, because I don't seem to have a page four.
Oh dear, does any?
I got a, I got a picture. I got a picture on page four.
Oh, my word, all right, um.
Have you seen the recommendations or recommendations?
Yes.
Are you in agreement with all of them?
Yes, we are.
Do you have a page four? I, what, what happens is I share a Xerox machine and different people put two-sided, one-sided, and you never know, I guess it bit me that somebody had it on two-sided, so you don't get page four.
I do not have a page four.
Okay.
I just have an assess- uh, assessor's image, that's all I have.
I'd be happy to read quickly page four.
You got page four?
If you'd like.
I don't have page four.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I don't wanna say I want to do it.
Uh, well, it, it, it says, the ones that you don't have is, within a month, please submit a revised plan that leaves out you have a slight mistake on where you put your fifty-foot review area, uh, it's supposed to be, um, measured from the slope line, and it was measured from the, uh, wetland line or whatever, I, I don't know if they want me to read it. Oh, by the way, this was an expanded upland review area, because the slope is like this steep, so the applicant put it back from the top of slope fifty feet this way, okay? So he did that, that was correct, but then someone who, the cartographer, just measured a little wrong, that's all. Uh, it's like a ten or fifteen foot difference, it makes no, never mind, okay? And, um, to approve on your revised site plan that you're gonna hand in to us is the fencing that we talked about tonight, and to add that note onto the plan about the Health Department, um, for abandonment of existing septic systems, there's a procedure because there, we've got to abandon the old septic systems, okay? And you still have that note wrong about the flood plain, it's just a numerical error. It's not note number six, I couldn't find note number six, so you gotta figure that out.
Note number six is on the existing conditions plan, so if you looked at the condis- existing conditions plan, it's on note number six.
I did, I did, well, we'll talk about it, don't worry about it.
That's fine.
I didn't see a stockpile area for the, um.
There's gonna be no, w- w- what they're gonna do is excavate, put a septic system in and backfill, there's gonna be no stockpiles.
Okay, and, um, duh, 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 oh, just add a note to the plan, any further activities to mobile home trailer park to be conducted by the owners or the residents, for example, tr- uh, tree or vegetation removal, installation of decks, or additional parking areas, et cetera, are required to obtain wetland permitting. In the past, people would just go out and build decks, well, you know, th- that needs a permit.
Does that apply if it's not within the upland area?
No, no, just in our jurisdiction, not, yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so you're in agreement with all the conditions of approval?
That's correct.
I'll entertain a motion to the significant ac- activity of, of this application.
So you want, uh, not significant activity, okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I propose that application A twenty-two dash four point four, one, two, five, one, North Colony, oh, sorry, Old Colony Road, James Delaney, uh, be deemed not significant activity.
Second?
Second.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Were you, did you wanna discuss?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, did I miss it?
No, no, I was just, I wanted to ask, are these mobile home, um, modular homes are considered trailers? What's the square footage of these units you're putting in there?
They are trailers, um, they are forty-two by fourteen, so six hundred, less than six hundred square feet.
So there's no, no modular homes going in there?
That's correct, they're just mobile homes.
Okay.
Um, can I just ask, um, if Erin, you can send me the page four?
And page two, you probably don't have page two.
Just send me the whole thing again.
We got two, we got page two.
You have page two?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have page two.
I do too, yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
You should've been in her office, and you should've been sure you got four pages.
Okay.
Anyway, motion made, any further discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes, now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
I make a motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, uh, application A twenty-two, four point one, twelve fifty-one Old Colony Road, James Delaney, with the conditions, uh, outlined in Erin's Environmental Planner's Report.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, did I hear four point one or four point?
Four point four.
Four point four, okay, motion made, and that is, uh, subject to all the conditions of Erin's recommendations.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Second, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, any discussion?
Wait, wait, I'm plucked.
Okay, we can add, uh, well, if they're gonna put the fence up, do we need the plaques?
On the west side or the east side?
West.
It's gonna be done along the river?
On the top of the river.
Okay, nope.
The wet, the wetland flags are way down by the river.
Pardon me?
The wetland flags are way down by the river.
Yeah, but the fence is gonna be.
Fence is going right at the top, so way up here.
Fence is on the top of the, to the bank.
The wetlands are like thirty feet down.
Okay, any other discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Under, uh, there's applications, we have, uh, four new applications coming in, and one of them being the application A twenty-two, five point one, I think there's a representative from Five Research Parkway that would like to speak tonight regarding his application.
I could plug in and share an image of that, if that makes sense.
First of all, name and, and, uh, address for the record?
Um, Jeff Checkaway with Colair Properties, uh, here representing Five Research Parkway.
Okay, now what do you wanna do? You wanna plug in and do what?
I had a slide, I know that we submitted our application yesterday, um, and it was understanding that you may want to just have a quick overview, which I.
Well, I don't know, eh, eh, we, eh, where are you gonna send the, the plug it in?
I didn't know if there was, I just needed HDMI cable, I didn't know if there's anything.
Eh, there, there isn't setup for PowerPoint, and we're told those are your plans there? That's that, those large set of plans? I don't think you need to get into that great detail, I think you can, we know the site, we know where the site is, what do you wanna do there?
So we're, uh, looking to come back now, I know we've, we've been in here, um, twice before and, and had approvals, uh, through the Inland Wetlands Water Courses Commission, and, um, you know, we're, we're coming back now after not getting approvals through the, or getting denials through the Planning and Zoning Commission, we're coming back with a significantly smaller, uh, project, um, I know we had a, two large buildings, um, for the first application, and, uh, Montante Construction, Amazon was the second application, but we're looking to just, uh, propose a four hundred and fifty thousand square foot, uh, warehouse now that they've, they've lifted the moratorium for warehouse applications in town with the new regulations, um, this falling in the new, uh, watershed interchange district, so, you know, we've spent a lot of time digesting all of the comments, and I, you know, to be quite honest, the town's done a tremendous job and put a ton of effort into, to all these projects, and we do appreciate that, but, you know, this is, we're here presenting this new project with significantly less impacts, um, you know, one warehouse on the southern end of the site, we're completely avoiding the northern end of the site, um, which I believe in, you know, letters we've seen from, uh, Mr. Heilman, who wasn't on the commission at the time, but, you know, we've moved away from that perch wetland that was a, a significant concern, um, and, and quite frankly, we've, you know, we've minimized a lot of the impacts and, uh, taken a look at all the new regulations and hopefully designed something that's a lot more palatable for the town and, uh, you know, this, this area and the site.
Your last application, I thought was about the same size building, but had a tremendous amount of paving, what's your paving square footage now?
Um, so our, our limited disturbance is gonna be approximately thirty-nine acres, and, uh, about twenty-five acres is the impervious area, that's proposed out of the one hundred and eighty acres on site, so our.
I realize, but twenty-five acres includes the building, which is what, ten acres?
Yes, approximately.
So you got driveways, but you, you don't know exactly what the parking lot at this time, offhand, and you don't need to, but the parking lot is quite a bit reduced from previous applications, correct?
And our, our limited disturbance has reduced our, our impacts, there, there are a couple new regulations, um, the hundred foot, um, wetland or body of water wa- was introduced new that I don't think was part of the previous applications, but a lot of the things that we're doing, um. lot of the things that we're doing, um, in our total quantities are really just on the existing roadways that are on the site. So, I think we have around point six-three acres of, um, upland review area that, that's impacted. Um, but if you take away the existing roadways and the other areas that are already installed, we're just proposing maintenance in those areas and utility installations, we're only around ten thousand, uh, square feet, or I think, you know, point two, two acres of, um, the upland review area impacts, and there's zero wetland fill proposed.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of them? Ally, go ahead. Nick?
Erin, is there activity out there now? There is no activity?
None, none that I'm aware of. They're not approved for any activity. The daycare is idle, I believe. That area is idle.
Okay.
And, uh, I, they have people monitoring it every now and then to make sure there's no trespassers and such.
All right, Jeff?
Nothing.
Mike?
No questions.
Jimmy?
No questions.
All right, so you're ready next month to present, make a presentation?
Yes, for June first.
Whenever, whenever the meeting is, first Wednesday in a month. Now, did I hear something about, um, well, you, you want to get clarification on whether a public hearing is needed?
Yes.
Okay, commissioners, I mean, uh, it's, we haven't seen a map, we haven't seen involvement, but we know, uh, previous applications, how well they, they abided by the regulations, so I don't know if that'll give us a guideline whether we want a public hearing or not. Any comments regarding that, Ally?
Uh, I think we can wait until we hear the public out roar.
Nick? Jeff?
That's fine.
Mike?
Okay.
Jimmy?
Um, what are the reasons for having that? Public interest, or is it wetland?
Well, public in, interest is one. I, I think, um, expedition, if they're, if we're going to have a public hearing, we can get it, once started, they can get it started in one month.
Oh, indeed.
Instead of two months.
Yeah, and, and until we actually see what the application does, we do not know whether or not it's significant in terms of wetland protection.
Right.
So, the only thing that we have to look at is public interest at this point. I'd like to see it and digest it a bit before I make a decision on that concern.
I'm a little hard to hear.
I'd like to, I'd like to review the applications before I would make a decision on significance.
So, there's your, your choice. You either, you can recommend, you can request a public hearing, or you can take your chances after we get reviewing of the plans next month?
Um, I, I think I'd like to pursue what the, the best pathway as far as timing goes. Um, we're not opposed to having a, a public hearing, uh, if it's for public interest. You know, we've, we've been through the process twice before, and we feel comfortable with our design that we've, you know, mitigated any potential impacts. And, um, you know, I, I know we've had approvals through here before for, for a, a more significant project, and I, I feel comfortable that, you know, going to a public hearing would, would be okay for the applicant.
Okay, it's too bad you didn't start last month. It looks like next month we've got a pretty busy agenda.
Well, they just re-approved the, lifted the moratorium, so we were kind of holding off before we could apply.
Got you. Okay, so the applicant has requested a public hearing.
The commission has to vote to set a public hearing, so, and you have to vote, and you have to say which it is, a significant impact activity, public interest, or petition. Well, we don't have a petition, so we don't have to worry about that one. But if it's a significant impact activity, then it, that's fine, but it trips, it means the applicant is subject to certain reports.
I, I'm in, if I had to make a decision this moment, it'd be on public interest because we don't know what the application is. So, if the commission wants to make a motion, um, we can vote on the nature of the public hearing.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose that we, um, consider a public hearing, set a date for a public hearing, how does that go?
Well, the, the, at the next meeting, the public hearing will be at the next wetlands meeting.
Okay. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose that we make the, um, a public hearing of the Five Research Parkway application at the next wetlands meeting due to public interest.
Is your second?
Second.
Motion made second, discussion? Call for a vote.
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay. You're all set?
Yes.
Anything else?
Nope, thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a couple of minutes here. Erin, uh, other applications, um, filling, the sewer division's filling down on John Street, anything major?
Haven't opened it yet, came in yesterday.
They don't talk to you early?
Uh, I sat down with them briefly, yes. So, it is, no, no, it's no, not a big deal. They're not filling wetlands, it's, it's upland.
Okay, North Rip Road, this has made a lot of newspaper, I think, or is that a different building? Mark development?
Came in yesterday at three, haven't really looked at it.
Okay. Laser Lane, stormwater management improvement. All right, so there really isn't pretty much, the things are pretty much the same?
Just for the record, you say that you're receiving those four applications?
I'm sorry?
Could you just state for the record that you were receiving all four of those new applications?
Oh, okay, for the record, the wetlands commission is, is, is in receipt of four applications, uh, tonight. Item, item F on the agenda. Okay, then I'll, no other business tonight? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, hold on. I know you, I know you want to go, but, um, could we just release some of these violations?
Certainly.
I, I did inspect them, and I'm ready to release two of them.
Which two would you like to release?
Uh, number four, which is eleven Trumble Drive.
Okay, does that take a motion?
Yes.
All right.
Mr.-
I'll entertain a motion to release, uh, violation at eleven Trumble Drive.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to release the violation at eleven Trumble Drive, Jay Corbin.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. And number five, uh, Erin?
Number five, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to release the violation at fourteen sixty-eight Tuttle Avenue, Dan Petrosky and Jessica Boudreau.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I see none, call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Nick, Mike?
Yes.
Jim? Yes. Okay. Um, number seven, we have that, under control two. Does that still stay on the violation list?
Yes, it, for next time, it'll be on there.
As well, as well as all the other notices that are on the violation list?
Well, actually, number three, I was instructed to take off, I forgot to take that off. Last meeting, you asked me to take that off, so that'll be off. And, um, I want to just say something quick about number six, which is thirty-three Summerwood Drive. They have finally come in for, and filed an excavation and fill permit with planning and zoning. I was given the, their engineer's report today, two-page description report. I haven't really looked at it much, and I'll, I'll report to the commission on that.
Okay, so that's on hold until next month?
Yes, yes.
Or you want to release it now? You don't want to release it now?
Oh, no, because they've got to build it.
Okay, and, and number three, you, you want, you're ready to release that?
No, not release it, they actually don't have a notice of violation, just to let it go.
Oh, they got an application that, for the, for the violation?
They still have their, their application, and they've been, actually, development of that is stalled. They're building a house, or refurbishing a footprint, building a house, and they stalled. I don't know what their problem is, but, um-
I thought it had something to do with their septic system or something, but there's been the no movement there.
Right, right, it stalled.
All right, so we're all set then? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a mo, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Oh, boy.
Sorry.
Okay, goodnight.